Alright, good evening everyone. I am Kim Shelton and I would like to call to one of this public forum to discuss bond considerations and options for the school bond. But I'd like to begin by the pledge of allegiance. If you can join me with that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, with my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Alright, just a couple of things before we begin. I just want to map out the evening. As we all know, the citizens of Newmarket approved the school board to bond up to thirty-eight million nine hundred forty-three thousand eighty-three dollars for additions and renovations to both the schools in our district on a March fourteenth vote. This Thursday, March eleventh, May eleventh at seven, the board will hold a special business meeting to decide the amount and terms of that bond. And tonight, we wanted to hold a public forum to share the financing options with the citizens of Newmarket and to hear their thoughts as we prepare to make our decision. We will begin tonight with a brief presentation by Superintendent Thado and Business Manager Ambrosio, and then we will open the floor to questions. So Meredith, take it away. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. So this is a bit of a recap of where we've been and where we stand today. So first, the board looked at a variety of options for financing. One option was to obtain a bond rating ourselves and sell the bonds on the open market. Some advantages to that, we had the flexibility to negotiate that ourselves, could leave open whether or not we wanted the option to refinance along the way. Unfortunately, that was ruled out in April of two thousand seventeen. We worked with a financial advisor who took a look at the district's financial history over the last number of years and determined that based on our valuation relative to our debt and expense, that the town and the school district likely bond rating was below the rating that we would obtain from the bond bank. Bond bank having double A rating, Newmarket was prepared to be lower than that. Another option that we considered was financing through the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Program. That was an attractive option because it had the lowest available rate and no prepayment penalty. We submitted an application for that on March thirty-first following voter approval. We were notified in mid-April that the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the local office in New England, had been notified that all federal funds allocated for the fiscal year were spent during the first quarter. So there were no funds remaining to be allocated for our project. The third option that we looked at is New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. We submitted that application on April seventh. We received our approval shortly thereafter. New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank has a double A rating. They charge no bonding fee to municipalities and school districts across New Hampshire. And if they refinance, the district receives any benefit through repayment. The unfortunate piece of that is we don't have the flexibility to adjust our term during the life of the bond. Another piece that we looked at were investment opportunities. Again, we worked with a financial advisor to consider the opportunities that would be available to us. We anticipate over the life of the construction project that we could earn half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars with interest ranging from about point eight-six percent. That would be through the public deposit investment pool, up to one point two-two percent, which is largely an investment for some in the public deposit investment pool and more in U.S. Treasuries. Again, there are some limited investment opportunities for tax-exempt bonds. The total investment span for those is about a year and a half for those investments. And we worked through an analysis of the cash flow for the project to determine those potential interest earnings. We also have to consider arbitrage and rebate. Arbitrage rebate. Arbitrage means that you can't earn more in interest than you're paying in interest, essentially. If you do, you're subject to repayment considerations. Also, because the life of our project is more than three years, we have to be very mindful of our spending and our investments during that timeframe. Terms and rates. So maybe hard to see from back there. There is a handout on the table. If you look at the top two rows first, level debt thirty years and twenty years, back when we made the proposal to voters, and these were based on December two thousand sixteen, interest rate projections, we were looking at interest rates over thirty years of four and a quarter percent and over twenty years of three and a quarter, three and a quarter percent. So a pretty substantial difference between those timeframes. You can see on the chart the total investment costs, including the interest rates for those periods, and what the estimated tax would be in the first two years, as well as the average of over the terms of those loans. The thirty-year debt that we projected to voters, projected an average of seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents more in taxes per year at that four and a quarter percent rate. Right now, in May of two thousand seventeen, the guaranteed maximum interest rate from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank is four and a quarter percent. So it is that maximum number that we shared with voters back in March. However, they're projecting that it is more likely to come out at about three and three-quarters percent. So we've shown you here in the slide, three point seven-five percent for twenty-five or thirty-year terms. The rates were the same for both. On a thirty-year level debt investment, that would be seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for voters over the life of the project. That's on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar median home. Taxes in the first year are estimated to be at a dollar seventeen. That's an increase to the tax rate for the bond itself, and two dollars and ninety-seven cents in the second year. Other pieces that the board has considered along the way, we don't yet have a guaranteed maximum price for the project. That's work the building committee is doing right now. We are working through schematic design process. We anticipate that we'll arrive at that guaranteed maximum price sometime this late fall, early winter. Another consideration is that interest rates are projected to rise over the next year, according to the financial advisor that we've worked with. And again, if you're following the markets at all, on bonds, that could be as much as a half percent within the next six months. And finally, we have just over half a million dollars that we received in this fiscal year for the life safety projects that were completed at the junior, senior high school in prior years. The elevator upgrades, fire bathroom pieces, fire system, fire alarm, and sprinkler systems. So those are other pieces that factor into the board's decision-making. And I guess that's the summary of all of the papers. And if we have some questions?
Yes, let's open it up for public comment and questions now.
And per RSA, per the law, you have to actually have a vote to expend any interest earned. So in the future, any interest, we would have to have a separate warrant article to spend any interest earned.
And the question being, I think also, what happens if we don't spend that? We have two-point-nine million dollars left at the end of the project. We finish the project, what happens to those funds that are left over from the bond? They can't be invested over the long haul. They have to return to taxpayers once the project is closed out.
Yes, yeah.
Right, but we would earn interest on that money until after the bond was...
So under the law, the district can only hold back two and a half percent of its prior gross budget appropriation. So right now, that's about three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, somewhere in that ballpark. So we wouldn't be able to hold on to those funds over the life of the project. Once the project is completed, we wouldn't be able to hold on to them, sorry, over the life of the bond. Once the project is completed, those funds go back to taxpayers. So they're not able to be reinvested. They offset the tax rate in the ensuing fiscal year.
At the end of the project, not at the end of the bond?
Right. Because we'll set up a separate capital project to track those funds, and they'll be in a separate bank account to isolate them.
So that every year, whatever interest is earned on the unused funds would have to be up for a vote of either the school board or the public on how that gets apportioned?
If you were to use them. Otherwise, they would just remain in there.
So they couldn't, but you could have something recommended to use those to reduce the payment in this particular year based on the interest?
Yes, and it would have to be a warrant article to expend those funds.
Okay, so that the citizens, the voters of the town would be able to decide every year whether that should be applied?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the five-forty, again, is that another vote that needs to be done?
Well, when we go to set the tax rate, it would be up to the board how much to retain and how much to return. But we could only retain up to three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars approximately. The prior years, it's based on the prior year's total gross appropriations.
Gotcha. So if the board decided to, whether it decided to retain a portion of the funds for its own reserve account, is there a way to use that money to, again, reduce a bond payment?
Yes, through the budget process.
Rather than being returned just in the next year as a credit against?
Correct. The first two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, right? So if you assume, if the board withheld the maximum, which would be that roughly three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, thank you for that correction, then the remaining two-hundred-and-ten has to go back to taxpayers in the next fiscal year under the law. That three-thirty is, can be held in the board's district's reserves, and then through the budget process can be appropriated into future budget years as a revenue source.
Okay. Thank you, and by the way, thank you for at least the recap of the presentation. I know there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I appreciate you sharing.
I'm pretty proud that I got it into five slides, actually.
So the four and a quarter percent, I think as I understood it, if it were today, if it were May, becomes three point seven-five, and there's, is there any, anything that has happened with the, at the twenty-year bond and the three and a quarter percent, which was the low number there? Is that still three and a quarter?
No. Sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. It's actually up to three point four percent, so that difference has narrowed.
Narrowed up quite a bit.
Significantly, yes.
Yeah. So if you were tempted to go for twenty years, you have much less incentive to do so at this point.
That is true.
Remember the twenty-five and three-point savings? Right, right. So they just want you to keep that money for a lot longer, I guess. That may be. And about four slides back, and I can't remember, but there was something I didn't understand.
Sorry. Do I go too fast?
More back, maybe.
That's it.
Okay, go forward.
The financing pathways, opened, open sale on the market, the USDA Rural Development Program, the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank.
So the last one on that one.
Okay. So typically, bonds are callable after ten years. In this case, the bond bank has that, has control over that. They're the aggregated pool holder. So if, if in ten years, interest rates are below, say that three point seven-five, if that's what we're able to lock in at, the bond bank manages to finance at three and a half percent. That quarter percent difference in interest over the remaining life of the bond would be refunded to us annually by the bond bank. So if there's a savings, it's in our favor. If there's no savings, we stay where we are.
If there's a savings, it's in our favor. It comes back over the life, not through?
Not in one lump sum, but yes, over the life.
And did you say through the bond bank? Can you prepay or not prepay?
You cannot prepay.
Excuse me, can I just follow up on that? In terms of, so what happens if, for Meredith, let's be optimistic. We had a little money come back from the state, so let's say that happens over the course of thirty years. I don't think we're too optimistic to think, so what happens to those funds that come back from the state?
So you have the same opportunity that we have in this fiscal year, right? The board can withhold each year, if, if next year, or three years from now, three years from now, we get a check for five million dollars from the state, the board can hold back only a certain percentage of that, right? Up to its two and a half percent of the prior year's gross budget appropriation. Again, right now, that's about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. That can be held back in the district's reserves. The remainder would go back to taxpayers in the ensuing fiscal year as a, essentially a credit towards taxes. It's a revenue.
Is there a potential for the credit to exceed what has been spent at a particular point, so that the taxpayers are actually, you know what I mean?
Right, it won't be, it will never be a negative, I don't suspect. I mean, I, you know, who can say? But I, that would assume that if we were to get back the full amount of the cost, but our, our budget each year is the bond plus the operating budget. So, so the total is probably never going to exceed what taxpayers are paying.
Yeah, and additionally, the state in the past, building aid, has never reimbursed at a hundred percent. So you'll get perhaps thirty percent on it if things were like ideal on the total project. So that's, and that would be the revenue that comes in.
And typically, that's paid out in chunks, you know, over a ten- or twenty-year period.
So the state's paying it out over a ten?
If they were to reimburse it.
And I know that's still under consideration by the legislature.
Thank you.
Russ, why don't we let Dan know first? We have a turn.
So I, maybe just take this down one notch from what we've been discussing for the people who are going to watch this at home later. Essentially, what we're saying is if either one of two wonderful things happen, or both, either the project comes in much cheaper than we've been estimating, or we were to get a chunk of money back from the state of New Hampshire in the form of building aid, we don't really have a vehicle to apply that over whatever the remaining term, a financial vehicle to apply that over the remaining term of the bond. You're going to see a sizable one-year dip in the tax rate, and then we bounce right back up to where we were. It, I just want to make sure that's reasonably clear to anyone who's watching at home, because it, I mean, the sensible thing to do if you weren't bound by state law would be to find some way to spread it out over time and keep the tax rate from doing that. But just make sure, again, it's clear to anybody who wasn't following that line of conversation that is what would happen.
To that point, because we're talking the same thing. If we're allowed to have a warrant article that says what we do with the interest every year, if we were to get building aid back or come in under the project cost, as voters, can we have a warrant article that takes more than two and a half percent because it's by the vote of the people and puts it in a sinking fund to offset the payment of the bond interest? Is that illegal? I understand you, you need to be able to set, plus, I think you're limited, that two and a half percent is up to a maximum. So if you already have money in the kitty, you can't take the additional two and a half percent of...
It's restated every year, too. Two and a half percent of the prior year, so...
Right, but my question, and I don't know if you have an answer or not...
Do we have the authority to exceed the RSA? I don't believe that we do.
No, but you could at any time put a warrant article to set up a capital reserve or expendable trust out of fund balance, remaining fund balance, instead of a straight warrant article. You could always say we're going to take...
So for example, if we receive notice in November that we were going to be receiving a million and a half dollars back in state aid, we could put a warrant article together that allowed us to set up a capital reserve fund for bond relief, you know, something to that effect.
Perhaps you might want to wait till the following year, when you know you have the money in hand, to say, okay, now that we are on track to receive this money every year, it would keep the tax rate flat, because you wouldn't get the savings.
At mine, it seems there is a potential way, should we be faced with extra money, rather than returning it absolutely beyond the two and a half percent.
Now, there's rules around what a capital reserve can be set up for, so I don't know if you could set up one necessarily to pay bonds. I don't know that.
Understand. And so if, I, I just sort of like to clarify that in the next, we don't have to do it before the bonding decision, but I'd like to know in advance if we get lucky in this and get money in the future, that the voters could end up having an option to retain some of those funds in a bond sinking fund capital reserve that could, you know, keep the tax rate down fifteen cents or thirty cents for a ten-year period, since we can't prepay, rather than just shoving the million dollars or two million dollars in. It's just finding out the facts and nailing it down. And if we could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
It's good optimism. I like that.
Yeah, I hope we have that problem to deal with.
Can we just quickly go through kind of next steps in terms of the timeline, just in terms of the financial timeline, and I think we go to the bond bank in June, is that right? June one or...
So the, we actually have to commit this month, so the board needs to make a decision about length of term this Thursday. We have to turn in executed loan agreement paperwork to the bond bank by Friday. By Friday. And then they will be going out to market within the next couple of weeks, and we expect rates to be locked in by mid-June.
Yes.
And money should be then in hand by the district in mid-July.
I know. I have the calendar, it's on my desk.
Any other questions? Right, we have more wants to say. I think I'm hearing from what you just said then, because I want, when you said you were talking about the rate of return and the expectation that interest rates could go up half a percent in the next six months, so the question was, gee, were you at all tempted to hold off until you absolutely needed the money? But it sounds like you decided that that kind of risk is not what you need, and the rates are good right now, and you're going to go bonding as quickly as you can.
I, I think that's part of the decision the board is trying to make. There was some discussion when our financial advisor was at the meeting, two meetings ago, about that very point. Did it make sense to borrow a little bit less now, maybe thirty, thirty-five, and hold off on borrowing the rest? Again, the market remains pretty volatile, and the projections are that it likely will increase by about half a percent in the next six months.
Those projections have been relatively accurate over the last...
That is true.
So, but I, I think the, still seems like, what is it, three point five we're talking about, some looking awfully good interest rate. Hate to borrow the money, I understand you hate to borrow the money, sitting around, you'd hate to watch those interest rates all of a sudden move much faster than you kind of imagined, so.
Those are the two things, Dale, that we're considering, and I, and I think one thing that is helping shape my decision, as we discuss it and everything, is learning about the ability to earn interest on the money and having that go back to the taxpayers and the benefit that they can see from that. That was not something that I fully understood until last meeting, really, in terms of earning money on the money and giving it back to taxpayers in the form of tax credits. And then the ability, if we somehow fall under budget or one of these scenarios happens, that there is the ability then to offset the tax rate.
No, I, so, so the net, instead of being three and a half percent, if you can get one percent on the money, then at least for that while, where you're waiting for the expenditures to go out, you're sort of nets out in two and a half, in a crude kind of way.
Does anybody have any input on the twenty-five versus thirty issue?
As part of the, we had discussions about this on the school facilities committee, and our recommendation, which was either to further back interest rate than the ones we're showing at that time, were from a conceptual point of view that the project should last at least, the benefits of the project should last at least thirty years, and estimates suggest longer, and that it would be the fairest, assuming the interest rates did not penalize us for extending the term to thirty years, that it would be fairest to spread that tax burden over the life, at least the minimum useful life of the facility, so that those people who had children ten, fifteen, or twenty years from now would be helping to pay for the project that their children were enjoying, rather than putting that burden on a shorter useful life. So I don't know if I'm making sense in that, but I would suggest, especially with the rates where they are, and there being no difference currently between the twenty-five and the thirty-year rates, that some of the discussion that was held in the last public forum about the distance between the rates being so large that you were getting penalized at a thirty-year rate, making the project that much more expensive have narrowed. So I would still, on balance, come out and say the thirty-year financing seems to me to be the most prudent for the taxpayer without significantly increasing the financial burden due to a much higher interest rate at thirty years than twenty-five years. I think the old difference was about seventy-five basis points or three-quarters of a percent between the rate spreads, and now there's no difference between twenty-five and thirty, and only about a thirty basis point difference between twenty and twenty-five. So I still think thirty sounds about the fairest approach. Thank you.
I pretty much see it the same way Russ does. You've got an asset that's going to have, if we do this at all correctly, a minimum of thirty-year useful life. It just doesn't seem fair at all to burden, you know, taxpayers over a very short term for something that has a very long life duration. And as far as the approach to floating bonds, it's, it's a scary one out there. I mean, I have college friends who trade fixed income for a living, and the expression that I've heard from them is careening between elation and terror. Pretty much describes every day at work for them these days. We've got a pretty good opportunity here to take this down, do it at an interest rate. Yeah, it might go a quarter point lower. That's not much regret compared to the risk of it going two or three point, two or three percentage points higher.
Just because you've had this wonderful meeting, you've got to get input from some of them. I've got to come up multiple times. I, I would say along the same, I'm kind of agreeing with the same thirty-year thing, and I, I think the other thing is sort of align, aligns what I said, it's a deliberative session. You know, if it was, if it was like the example here, where it's three and a quarter versus four and a quarter, I'd be all in for, let's suck it up and try to do it in a twenty-year band. But for that little interest rate difference, and I think if you're kind of thinking about what is and what might happen over here, there's a reasonably good chance that somewhere in the life of that thirty-year loan, interest, the inflation will take off a bit, and you'll be realizing that you're, you're paying this back in cheap dollars, and the town will be getting a deal. I think that's a very good chance that that might happen. So since that, the mark, that's kind of, I think that's where the market is giving us the greatest value. I kind of agree with everybody else and say, take it.
Drew Keith Haber, Fifty Elm Street. So just to provide a slightly different view, I'm in the twenty-five-year camp. I understand that our current projections are that the facilities will last for thirty. I would say there's no guarantee on that. And I would prefer to not have overlapping long-term bond payments, which I think is a possibility, though unlikely a possibility. In an effort to try and reduce that, I would advocate for the twenty-five-year. It does provide us the benefit of lower overall expense as well. It does provide us the benefit of, uh, lower overall expense as well. Um, I, I agree with Russ's sentiment, though, that it also, uh, I don't know if you can say penalizes, but certainly those of us who are paying taxes today will pay more than those who, uh, come in at some point in the future. But that's also just kind of the nature of the beast. Um, and I, I would also say, interest rates are very low now, and they're not likely to go lower. So with all that said, yeah, if you're, if you're asking for opinions, mine's twenty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have given us some great food for thought and really helped shape the decision. Um, does anyone from the board have anything to add? Um, yes.
I was just going to point out, this is based on our current year, fiscal year tax valuation, so that number does tend to change. Um, it has gone up in recent years, and I expect it will continue to go up, which means it doesn't change our total cost, obviously, but it does mean that that's spread out, um, more, and so the impact of individual taxes is lessened. Yeah, it's all somewhat hypothetical.
We will be, as Meredith said and I said earlier, we'll be meeting on the eleventh thir- this Thursday at seven. Um, that meeting will be held in the Town Hall Auditorium, and is a public meeting, will be on television again. We will, at that point, as, as a special business meeting, discuss the bonding option for us and make our final decision for the bonding option, and then it will go to the bank the next day. Again, I think everyone who came out tonight gave us some great ideas and food for thought, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.